Next, School Committee Chair Report. I have nothing to report. Resource Committee?
Resource Committee, we're waiting to receive that money from the city and need to decide how to spend it. Most will probably go to its building needs and mall remediation. So that's kind of where we're at. So, Mr. Jokel, when we get that okay, schedule a resource meeting.
Does that include your school building?
School building needs.
Yeah.
School building needs. Crocus School Building Committee is going to meet October 15th. That's part of the monthly meeting that takes place. And also, could, Mr. Jokel, give us any update on the Long Joe roof? On how that's going?
Well, the Long Joe roof, I guess you could say, continues to be impacted by weather. We're in the process now of waiting on a couple of change orders. One in regards to the gutter system. There was a little bit more rot than anticipated in the gutter support system. And also the cupola. So, we're waiting to receive, I guess, revised pricing from the contractor. And we'll be sharing that as soon as we have that. But the projected timeline on the roof itself will probably go out to December 1st at this point. That's estimated.
Looking forward to seeing that. Mr. Mayor, I talked to a citizen the other night, and they just were so happy that that's being done. They said when they come down up Rollstone and they can see that cupola, they said they just love it. It just helps make the city. So, I'm glad that's been taken care of.
I agree. That's, yeah, part of the project is to light the cupola again as well. So, and you know how that will be, Peter. You can see it from all over the city. It's a beacon. It will be. Any questions from the committee? Policy Committee?
I'm going to speak to Assistant Superintendent Paula J. Quinto tonight about she and I connecting and looking at policies moving forward. We do have, we did have policies to approve, sorry.
Two in our package.
Yeah, the two about nondiscrimination and then the use of school property, both of which are important policies. So.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
I'm just curious, Sally, are, when we're getting these policies, is this just the course that you guys are charging to update policies? Are these issues that have come before you that people are asking you to look at? Or how is it that we have these two kind of coming to us?
So, we have a couple of different processes with the policy subcommittee. One of them is that Paula and I have for a year plus, plus, for some time, going through our policy book. We have a lot of outdated policies. School use policy was among them. School use policy before actually referenced organizations and groups that hadn't existed for like 20 years. So, we looked at that policy to put it in alignment with similar policies within the region. And also because it is one of the areas in which we interface with the public. So, anything to add to, Bob?
No.
Sally, it's come up in building and needs and also resource on the school use.
Right.
And that's been part of it, where what we're charging other outside groups and so forth. And those things have not been updated in some time.
Yeah, we also, you know, the school buildings are absolutely for the use of the public. And I know that there are sport, you know, sports groups that avail themselves of it. But, you know, there, you know, there was an instance last year where a member of the public was using a building and it wasn't being paid for. So, there, again, we look at these incidents and kind of, to construct to the policy so that everyone's on the same playing field. And we hadn't looked at this for forever. I mean, it was the 90s, I think, that the previous dates were. The nondiscrimination policy, Bob, I think you can speak to that a little bit more because that's something that's been required by our insurance or...
Well, we were looking to update several policies over the year, and that was one that hadn't been updated for several years. So, it's already had one hearing.
Yep.
And tonight is really the second hearing. As we were looking through our records, we just noticed that we didn't have the second hearing, so that's why it's on tonight's agenda.
Yeah.
Another question?
Yes.
We received communications from two people in the district about policy questions, and I'd like to just hear an update about where those stand. So, one was regarding bullying and another was regarding public, Fund, Pittsburgh Public School fundraising policy. So, I'd just like to know what's being done. I think in all cases, or in both cases, members of school committee forwarded that back to your office, Bob? So, I just wanted to know where we might stand on that.
So, I'll go in reverse order.
Yep.
So, first, on the fundraising, the Donors Choose.
Yep.
We have a fundraising policy. And what we spoke about this morning in cabinet is referring that to the policy subcommittee. The last time that policy was reviewed was back in 2011. The world has evolved in terms of all these social media websites like GoFundMe or Donors Choose. And it's time to revisit how we can accept those type of donations to the school committee because donations are separate from fundraising.
So, do you, so your recommendation is that that's going to be moved to policy committee for discussion in its next meeting or...
Yes, we're going to start gathering some information from MAS, see what other policies, what other communities have for policies. It's an active topic amongst a number of communities, whether it be business managers or superintendents, as communities try to grapple how to address this.
And then the bullying?
So, in the bullying, the bullying was updated about four years ago. And that's something that has, was revised with outside counsel and was approved by the school committee at that time. You know, individual cases are generally handled at the school level first. And that's how that's handled.
I think, going back to fundraising, I think most fundraising done in the system is done by the PTOs. And they handle all the funds and...
Not necessarily.
Nope.
Some of the different groups do fundraising as well. The athletic group.
Boosters, all parents.
Band chairs, youth ventures. So, but if the fundraising is one issue, donations and soliciting donations is different. The school committee has to...
Except them under Master Nola's gifts. But the whole digital, social media world has happened since that policy was originally written. So, we need to take a look at that.
Really needs a good look at.
Yeah.
Raising the funds and where they're going and how they're being used.
So, one of the things that we're looking at then is with like a GoFundMe page or the other one that you mentioned.
Donors Choose.
If it's donations, our policies and probably other districts' policies aren't current with today's, the way people can make donations today.
Correct.
And that's, how do you deal with that?
Right.
Right. Now, would it be different if, you know, just say the trip to Washington, D.C., they just said, "We're raising funds for the trip." There's a GoFundMe page. Does that fall under donations or fundraising?
Could be either.
Could be either, okay.
It's the way you approach the digital media.
Okay.
That's the issue.
Got you.
If there are photographs, do the photographs all have permission to be there?
Right.
If there's a description, does the description violate anyone's confidential rights?
Got you.
If the donation is made to the adult whose page it is, are they paying taxes on it?
Right.
Versus a donation that's made to the school district.
Right.
Which then you own because you accept it as a gift.
Right.
So, all of that, in the world of digital media, gets very blurred. Whatever we come up with as a policy needs to include fundraising and donations and then some guidance around that social media venue.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Pierce, you also? Student Support Committee, that would be Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Thanks. So, we are, we've struggled to get a date. I'm still waiting for Mr. Horgan to get back to us about some availability. So, we are tentatively meeting for student support. We're hoping to be able to put that out there for late next week. And again, we'd like to have Mr. Horgan join us. Ms. Reynolds and I have talked about two topics that we'd like to have on that next agenda we have yet to meet this year. So, one, we'd like to really be able to dig a little deeper into the accountability report, specifically look at the role that DSAC plays and really get a sense of sort of best path forward regarding accountability. I know we're going to get a report about that tonight. And also, we would like to get data from the schools about incidences of bullying that have been reported, just to get a sense of the extent of the issue. Obviously, this is a problem for lots of kids in lots of schools. It's got to, it's got to stop. But it's a lot harder to always make that happen. But we'd like to really get a sense of where the schools stand at this point in terms of reports that they do have to make to the state. So, those are two agenda items. I don't have anything new to actually report about what's come out of those meetings, just that that's where our focus will be.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. School Personnel Committee, we're going to be meeting an executive session to discuss some of the recent developments with contracts. So, there's nothing really to report at this point. Executive Committee, nothing as well. Student Report, Matthew, please.
Lisa Fong could not be with us tonight. Also, we're kind of confused about the new, you know, the change in the time of the meeting, so.
What are you talking about? I don't know.
Yeah, it's okay.
Love these kids.
Yeah, I will be reading the announcements. NIASC, which many of us probably already know, the Human Rights Association of Schools and Colleges will be taking a visit to Pittsburgh High School. It usually takes these visits occasionally, so it's not really, it's kind of like a drill for us. We know what's going on Tuesday, October 9. This is actually going to reach out to parents as well because we are having a parent forum so that NIASC can hear about what parents are concerned about.
Yeah.
And Mr. Roach really cares about that as well. So, come and participate if you're a parent. They really take into detail what, you know, goes on in the school. I think that'll be at 12:30 p.m. in the main office. You might change the location depending on what happens, but Tuesday, October 9 at 12:30 So, this is just a message from Mr. Roach. The Pittsburgh Human Rights Commission is offering two open positions for anyone who's interested. They've reached out to students at Pittsburgh High School if they're interested. They do have voting, they will have voting rights on this committee. So, if you're interested, contact Mr. Roach. That'll obviously go on to the mayor's office. There are just a few weeks left until Pittsburgh High's school-wide testing day for PSAT, SAT for all students. This is a very special, this is a very specially unique thing for Pittsburgh High School because a lot of schools don't do this. So, we're very lucky to have this, especially considering there's no fee for this, so students don't have to pay. So, I personally have never seen this ever happen at any other school. And I've been to other schools. So, yeah, it's scheduled to take place in October 10 for all grades. And students are encouraged to take Khan Academy to practice on skills they need to improve. And this is especially important for juniors because they get into the National Merit Scholarship. So, if you have a junior, this is very important for them. It's usually Pittsburgh High has about one or two every year. I'm not going to go through the Pittsburgh, the athletic schedule just because it's really long. So, if you want to go look at that, go on the website for Pittsburgh High School and it'll bring you to a link. The PTO meeting will be on Tuesday, October 4 from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. There will be a Student Advisory Council meeting, Student Advisory Council, on Tuesday, October 16 at 7:15 a.m. in the main office. So, that, just taking input from the students and kind of combining it with teacher input and just kind of making more of a robust school system, that's kind of how we change the schedule and everything, so. Schoolwide Picture Day will take place on October 19. This will be for all grades and encompasses student IDs and personal picture orders. We're taking student IDs very seriously, especially now, just for security purposes so that if you come into the building, we know who you are. So, yeah. Pittsburgh High's Homecoming Pep Rally and Homecoming Game will both take place on Friday, October 19. The Pep Rally will take place during the school day, the last period. And the game is at Crocker Field at 7:00 p.m. The Homecoming Dance will take place on Saturday, October 20 from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. In the cafeteria, the FHS cafeteria. And the School Improvement Council will be meeting on October 25 at 5:00 p.m. in the main office. And that's about it.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
No, if you're done, I just want to make a motion. Are we done?
You also?
Yeah.
Any questions for the student representative? None? All right.
I would like to make a motion if it's okay with everybody. Yes, go ahead. What did you?
I was going to just ask Matthew about, are people really aware of Crocker Field on the new brick that had been put in at Crocker Field?
Most people are pretty aware of kind of that whole redesign or whatever. But I think they just, they're aware of that. I'm sure they're going to take that into consideration. We have talked about that at the school. So, I'm not, yeah. Is this like regarding something specific?
While the Crocker Field Restoration Committee has completed the brick walkway and it really looks great, there's still a lot of bricks for sale.
If I could say, I do the concession stand when we have home games. And everybody's commenting on it. And they come up to the concession stand and ask if they can still get a brick. And Rick works with me there. Rick runs the thing.
I work with Rick. And I think the games have generated a lot of interest in it.
We were going to set up a table Friday night. Mike Tellen. Yeah, Mike Tellen and I.
We can do it in the concession stand if you need it.
Because we've run off the farms to get the bricks. And when Mike Tellen and I were going to set it up, maybe we'll do it for the next home game.
Yeah.
Definitely for homecoming.
Yeah, absolutely. People definitely were interested.
It's great. John Cordio has just, what a fantastic job. John is a 68 graduate of Pittsburgh High School. He's contributed all of his time. We've had a lot of contributions.
I'm 68.
From a lot of people to make this happen.
I think people thought they missed their chance, so that would be great. Yeah.
No, it's, probably on the big one, the gray one.
Yeah.
I think those are pretty well sold out, but the red bricks are still available. I had a question on the School Improvement Council, maybe Paula? Do we still get who's on the School Improvement Councils? Their names of the people on the School Improvement Council?
I will get that information, yeah.
They're really, you know, maybe something should be talked about to the principals too because there still are specific numbers of people who are supposed to be on the school councils. A number of parents, teachers, and community people. I'd like to see how we're doing on school councils.
Okay.
As well, yes.
Yeah, just looking at the, where we're headed here, executive session, we have a gentleman here who's contacted me and he's here with his two children, beautiful children. And I was wondering if we could just move up the public, the public comment part to accommodate him before we break. This is Mr. Josh Cartwright and his two children. And he's wanting to understand the process and speak to us if that's possible.
That's in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I would second that.
Motion made and seconded to go out of order and provide public comment now. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is unanimous? Please, sir. Set a table? You can say.
Could you explain one other thing though? Because it's often awkward to me. Just so you know, like, we hear comments, we're just really not supposed to respond to comments.
Just listen.
Just because I always feel like that's awkward, but, so we're listening.
Thank you.
And you can state your name and your address and then...
My name's Josh Cartwright. I live on 44 Payson Street. I'm a data analysis for a local software company here in Pittsburgh. So, one of the main concerns that brought me, my boss, and a couple of us together to kind of figure out what happens and how policies are made and enforced. Bullying is a constant issue. My son's dealt with it the three years that we've lived here in Pittsburgh. Luckily, this is the first year he hasn't needed to. There were, there's not very, no tolerance policy has been referenced several times throughout the media. And even though I submitted an email that looked more like suggestions rather than no tolerance policy, I do understand children are children. But at the same time, everyone, in a normal society, you can't act appropriate for it. You're generally rehabilitated or removed from it. In one of the policies that we wanted to highlight, mention that academic would be considered into punishments. And we don't believe that academics and discipline is something that should be considered. Just because you're playing football or on a scholastic team doesn't mean you can bully people or punch them in the face. There is no policy at all for sexual harassment, little girls or women's rights. There is the bullying policy. The reason that it was allowed to happen for so long is because it's, I can't remember the verbatim word, but there's no number. The entire, the entire text about bullying is subjective. It's going to happen numerous amounts of times. Well, how many is numerous? How long do kids or teachers that are being bullied? Because that happens quite a bit too. There just seems to be a lot of issues about the aggression and progression of the students. There are reports and studies that show both in support and out of support for no tolerance policies. And Pittsburgh, currently the only no tolerance that's actually defined is in the use of weapons at the school or bringing them. We do believe that there should be harder lines drawn and that there needs to be a baseline for punishments. Like I said, I'm sorry, I'm not really sure how this works. I do have like a whole list of SLU. I wasn't sure if I needed to get a petition or anything like that. But that's, I just, I want to, I just want to protect my kids and hopefully all the other good ones.
Can I ask a question, I guess, of the committee? When the policy committee meets, they would be the one who would be addressing the policy on bullying. And it's my understanding that any subcommittee meeting, with the exception of some personnel committee meetings, would be open to the public to attend. And I don't know when the, I think you said the next policy, I'm not sure when you would be addressing this at a policy meeting, but...
Yeah, so we haven't scheduled the next policy meeting. We're trying to do our policy meetings like every four to five weeks. So, I'm going to meet with Paula and we're going to lay out the map for the next policies that we'll address. And then we'll schedule a meeting probably over email. We had one in September. We'll have one maybe late October. So, we'll...
Schedule over email, not have a meeting over.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, well, yeah, we'll figure it out. Those meetings are publicly posted. They are at the city offices on 157 Boulder Drive. So, those do get posted. So...
I would just say, I think another piece to consider and just for Mr. Cartwright to look at as well, a lot of times, school districts are bound by state law. And a lot of things are defined through state law that on the outside, you would think to yourself, "Well, we should be able to squash this right away," right? "We should be able to do X." But sometimes school districts have hands tied at a higher level. But not, obviously, everybody is dedicated to protecting kids. That should be our utmost concern. I think it's important that people bring their concerns forward and feel like they're being heard. I just would say that a lot of times, that there are state law that's involved in developing the policy.
Yes.
Mr. Cartwright, the first thing you need to do is contact that principal if your child is being bullied.
I'm sure you've done that, right?
And... All the way to the superintendent? Yes, sir.
And you then, if nothing happens, you need to contact the superintendent of schools.
He said he did.
And he's done it.
Now, he's coming to us.
Now, he come to us and you're right, something needs to be done. I know as a former principal, I never wanted it to go beyond me. And something should be done at the school level. This part of, "Boys will be boys" and so forth, that doesn't hold water anymore. And your child should not be bullied. And something should be done. Don't give up. Keep pushing it.
Mr. Cartwright, Ms. Pierce is absolutely right. There are legislation that was enacted three or four years ago. As a matter of fact, I was a state rep. We brought in Alice Peish, who was the chair of the Education Committee on Beacon Hill. And the argument is that they're trying to ensure everyone's rights. As far as I'm concerned, it's well-intentioned, but it's run amok. All right? We cannot simply expel someone. There's a process you have to go through. It's very detailed. It's very lengthy. Doesn't help you out or your child.
Or suspend.
Or suspend even that. I mean, it's just become so difficult to do that it's almost, it doesn't happen. We fear your pain. You know, let your state representatives and your senators know that this is not working. I certainly have. But we will do what we can to ensure the safety of your child and that he or she is not bullied. But it's tough. It's a tough, tough situation. The legislation really has handcuffed a lot of cities and communities and school systems. You know, I'm sure that they could argue, and Alice Peish would argue, why this is important, the way it's written. I don't agree. But that's not your problem. We're going to, we're going to deal with what you're going through right now here in Pittsburgh and your child's school. So, I urge you to attend that policy meeting. It's open. It's an open meeting. You're welcome to come.
Yeah.
We will notify...
Yeah, I mean, the best, again, the best way to find out when meetings are because they are public, they're publicly posted physically at, like I said, the municipal offices. But, you know, again, you can also call central office to find out when meetings are listed. Like I said, we'll schedule, you know, Paula and I will be meeting soon. We... We are on a monthly RODA, and thank you for coming forward.
I have a...
Yes.
A thought, if I may. Might we try to schedule it when Mr. Cartwright would be available? I believe he's working, I have no idea what his hours are, but...
Generally, we schedule policy meetings when all, you know, when all relevant personnel can be there. Paula has been a, you know, important piece of that. So, we try to have policy meetings, like, you know, later in the day. Sometimes they're four o'clock, sometimes, sometimes they've, we, not recently, but we've had them before school committee at times as well. That's always an option, because we have our school committee meeting at 6:30. You know, we've had meetings, we've had, we had student support meetings that would start at five when we had a seven o'clock meeting. So, you know, that's a possibility.
What are your working hours?
I kind of just, I work all the time.
Work all the time? So, you might take a lunch break or a dinner break to attend this meeting?
Yeah.
I will keep you in the loop, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you.
May I ask, Mrs. Guequinto, something? Paula, we, zero tolerance isn't, other than the weapons piece, like, that isn't something that any school system can have at this point, right? In terms of, I mean, obviously, we would say, absolutely, we should have zero tolerance for anything that would be bullying or violent or...
Mass general law still has very, much stricter regulations around weapons, assault on a staff member, and drugs. So, it's weapons or drugs and assault. And then there's 37 each and a half, which involves a student who's been accused of a felony, charged with a felony. And while that's being adjudicated, they're, depending on what the felony is for, if it has substantial potential to impact the conduct in the school, the conducting of school, the life of the school, then students can be removed while they're going through the process of adjudication or trial. The other infractions for which a student might be suspended, there are procedures, students can still be suspended. There are procedures involving offering compensatory educational services along the way. Expulsions are not permanent. There's actually nothing like the former expulsion.
Right.
So, it's no more than 90 days or if it's nothing beyond the end of that school year. But there are hearings, I mean, there are all kinds of processes in terms of that. So, it would be helpful if a parent has a document that they're referring to, to know that. Because sometimes, documents aren't as up-to-date as the practices we all, in which we all engage. And that's why, when we look at some of our policies, we're trying to go back, or your policies, to what's really old and out of date. So, it's, it, it's not complicated, but it's very particular.
And it would be different if there are different rules that apply to private schools and to charter schools. Meanwhile, charter schools that are public money, they have to follow public law. But I think sometimes, people, as you mentioned, Mr. Cartwright, have used this term "zero tolerance" a lot. And I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what that actually entails under new state law that was passed three years ago. And it's, I think it would be, I think we should work with you to try to make things better. I just would say that, at the state level, there are new rules that apply about, that we, it's make, it's difficult to remove students who are really problem students.
Okay. Y'all set, sir?
Oh, I, I, I don't know, do I...
Get up and leave. You need to say anything else, you can. You got, yeah.
So, of course, before coming here, I did research some of the local schools that have zero tolerance policies and enforcing, like, especially when it comes to sexual harassment. One of the issues that they ran into that is kid falls down, teacher goes, picks up the kid, in, like, an elementary setting. That's not allowed anymore. Or kids trying to help each others, things like that. So, I definitely understand that no tolerance policies have to be very careful when you implement them with the verbiage that you put in. And I do, and I can appreciate the state's baseline for what they believe punishment, you know, and guiding towards that nature. I, I do agree that there are a lot of things that cannot be done and, but I do, I do have enough hope in, like, general humanity and loopholes that there is something that can be done.
Well, we will work toward that goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, kids, for coming out tonight. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
You know, if the committee so chooses, you know, I think we should probably continue. We've got some folks here.
Yeah.
This is Ethan, is that Ethan, is that?
Yep.
Why don't we move forward with that superintendent's report? And this is Ethan Chandler, Karate for Kids.
Mayor, can I, just to wrap up a couple of quick things, if we do the approval of the minutes from...
Minutes, yeah.
Yeah, just, just, just so that, then we can loop back.
Okay, all right. Approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of September 10th, 2018?
Make a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, there's unanimous, thank you. Go ahead. Yep.
Ethan, you want to come up to the front table? Ethan's a student of ours up at Pittsburgh High School and the son of Tammy Chandler and former school resource officer Mike Chandler. And he had the opportunity to...
Thank you.
...talk to the commissioner of education.
How wonderful.
Couple of weeks ago and about his program.
Yes.
Yes.
So, my name's Ethan Chandler, Robert Ted. And I started Karate for Kids in 2017. It was a United Way Youth Venture. We started out having Karate for Kids as be scholarships for at-risk youth to help them gain a karate experience. And we've expanded it to make more than just karate, to have it develop any character with all walks of life. So, snowboarding, basketball, any type of school or outside-of-school activity that helps a kid have something to look forward to, I guess, in the day.
How long you been doing this?
This, so, we will be doing this for about two years.
Really? Good for you.
How many kids?
We have one kid scholarshiped as of right now from Rhingold. She is a seven-year-old. She's been on the scholarship for about four months now, so it's a six-month scholarship, and then it gets renewed after the six months. And then we're looking to have another one in the winter coming up with either karate or biddy league in the schools, basketball, and then hopefully, once spring comes around, to have a baseball one or another karate one.
Cool.
No, when you say scholarship, is this something that you raise the money for to cover?
Yes. So, we've had, we've had about four fundraisers. We had a, we had, we had a prize calendar, which was a 30-day prize calendar. Each day was a different calendar. We had a 5K walk-run race where everybody came out. We also ran the concession stand at the Pittsburgh High Leominster game. That was a very big hit, because obviously, it's the Pittsburgh-Leominster game. A lot of people come out for that. We had a movie night, and we're actually starting another fundraiser as of right now. We're doing a prize calendar. It's a $5 prize calendar, and that'll be for the month of November. So, we plan to print those out soon. We're just looking for some more donations to help finish up the calendar.
Ethan, I read the article about you in the paper, and I just, I mean, congratulations. This is such a wonderful venture.
Thank you.
But it just speaks to your character, that you're looking to give back to people and have kids who maybe couldn't have gotten that experience to get the benefits that you've obviously gotten from your activities. And I just think that's really wonderful. It's important that, you know, tonight, we started with recognizing some of the, some of the nastier things that can happen between kids. And it's just really nice to see really great things happen with kids. Thanks.
So, if we wanted to make a donation, we could just email you?
You can email, I have some letters here, if you'd like, and I can give one of those to you.
Yes, that'd be good. Any further questions?
I do have one more, I'm sorry. So, are you still involved with the United Way? It started out as United Way...
Yeah, it's still a United Way Youth Venture. I work with Mr. Mercado at the high school, who's the champion. Michelle Brennan, who is one of the people that works at United Way Youth Venture. Tamara, who is our outreach specialist. And there's a lot of people at United Way Youth Venture who help us kind of guide us, I guess, to go on to bigger and better things within, once our... I'm an 11th grader junior at Pittsburgh High School.
Very impressive.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, just to sort of clarify, Youth Venture, we have an incredible partnership with the Mount around this youth venture experience. And it's an opportunity for young people to develop their own sort of passion-based idea. So, it's for students, led by students, generated by students. And the goal, one of the, it's sort of a, an activity, but the goal is they develop a business plan, but it's with that sense of community, civics, action-oriented endeavor. So, it's not just a business plan to raise money and, I don't know, grow a bank account. It's really to think, here's an issue in the community. We have kids who don't have the same great experience that's been transformational for me or my friends. That's, they raise money. It could be for therapy pets. In Ethan's case, it's for giving back to his peers. So, it's a great partnership with the Mount, using a business model, but it goes way beyond the business.
Yes, you have to, once you first start, you present to a panel pretty much just like this. You're standing up and you have a sideshow, and then they give you a certain amount of seed money. So, you ask for a certain amount of seed money. You have to be very detailed, you have to research. So, it's about a six-month process of just creating it. They invited, so, Mr. Ravanel was there, Mr. Roach was there, a couple businessmen were there, and we just presented to the panel, and then they decided whether or not you get the seed funding, and then we went from there.
So, it's kind of like a mini Shark Tank.
Exactly what it is. No, it's, it really is, yeah.
I'm assuming this panel wasn't as nasty as the Shark Tank family.
Some tough, tough questions, though.
Yeah, no, it definitely was some tough questions, yes.
Oh, it's really cool.
That's good.
May I ask you, Ethan, I was at the same meeting that you were with the, the new commissioner of secondary education. But at that meeting, you spoke about your own achievements. Would you tell us what you've done in the field of karate or...
Sure, so, I've been doing karate since I was six years old. I'm 16. It's 10 years. I recently stepped away from doing karate to focus more on my venture and stuff like that. So, I, when I was younger, I was a very hyperactive kid, and I feel like karate's helped me to control all that and put it into more important things, such as the venture. And so, I've learned to keep the things from just kind of running around to controlling it into my academics, college, and my youth venture.
And what, what, how, where did you go in the karate levels?
So, I'm a second-degree black belt in Kempo martial arts. And it was, Kempo martial arts was started by a guy named Ed Parker, back long, long time ago. He recent, he passed about 10 years ago, and it's still very alive in the Massachusetts area. So, it's AKI, which run by five people. My instructor, Dr. Len Bersard, he runs Len Bersard's Family Martial Arts Center over on Airport Road. Very amazing people. They do a lot of character development there. I know they go into a lot of the elementary schools to teach character development. And again, I feel like all of the things I did when I was younger, I can now push to help other kids have that same experience that I did.
Any further questions?
How old do you have to be to be in your program?
Us, ages six to 12.
I mean, you wouldn't take me?
We're always, it's, karate is open to any ages. You can always just stop by, take a class.
I'll think, I'll answer you.
Very much.
Thank you very much. Can you give me a personal...
Thanks, okay.
Very impressive, very impressive. Well, we're going to keep going.
Yeah. Do you want to go back and do the approval of the minutes?
We did.
You did it.
What about the delegates?
The delegates is next. Actually, first action item.
Any communications, though, right? That comes, oh, yes, I've got a, I've got a communication. So, I wanted to, I wanted to thank the Second Chance Animal Services, Be Positive Therapy Pets does a lot besides bringing therapy pets places. And we had a record-breaking-for-Leominster number of families come to get their pets' low-cost vaccine and microchips. About half of the 147 pet families were from Pittsburgh. So, we've got a really, really good twin-city, you know, synergy going with the vaccine clinics. We'll be planning another vaccine clinic here in Pittsburgh, probably Saturday, March 30th, 2019. The communication, I brought Mr. Waffles, the unofficial mascot of school committee for...
I'd just like to make note here that the meeting may not be too exciting, because Mr. Waffles is asleep right now, I'm just saying.
That means it's a good meeting, because he's in a good place. So, we have pet therapy in our elementary schools, and we've just started this week back again at the Learning Perspectives Program at Rhingold. And I brought him here to tell everyone that the Sentinel is doing a piece on the Learning Perspectives Program, and they will do another piece in the spring. So, what we found today, and I've written an article about this, and I'm working with the administrative, the National Group for School Administrators. And we're also doing a presentation at the MAS C on pet therapy. Pittsburgh is a leading district in the state of Massachusetts for pet therapy in classrooms, in groups. We do Boys and Girls Club visits. And the Sentinel came today to visit Learning Perspectives and observed children who are challenged socially and emotionally and who are maybe behind with their reading, read to three of the therapy pets. He has two colleagues, both dogs, with owners. So, the Sentinel will be doing a piece probably this week, and they will do another piece in May at the end of the school year. The idea meaning, being kind of the long-term study that we've been doing with data, you know, data collection. So, a little, a little student today who has not read for as long as five minutes, did 20 minutes with Mr. Waffles. 20 minutes. She quadrupled her ability to read aloud. And what I would say to everyone, and I'm glad we have children in the room, if you have a pet at home, please read to your pet at night. He really likes the low, soft murmur of steady voices reading. The dogs we have, Fiona the Great Dane and Bella, who's a Puerto Rican Sato dog, really enjoy it. And we are going to be presenting at the MAS C conference, and there's some other really cool Pittsburgh Public School programs at the MAS C conference. So, that is why Mr. Waffles is here. It's sort of not...
Always welcome.
I'm glad to hear it. And the low, steady voices really make him very comfortable. So, thank you.
Yes.
Are we in communications right now?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Ah, yes.
I do have a community. I, I did send an email earlier this, well, September 16th, to both the mayor and to Mr. Stevens about agenda items. And I know, I got a call back from Mr. Stevens about maybe having a discussion about some of the questions and thinking about how they might move forward at some point on an agenda. I was, I went to the MAS C Charting the Course workshop on the 15th and just as a refresher. And I think, especially as Mr. Jokel has talked about presenting his goals in his tenure here, I, I would like to remind us that as a school committee, that is also a role for us to give input about what we want to see for goals for the district. And I, I think this is a good time to take stock about that again and have more of a vehicle for input about the district's goals. I know they talked about adding, they talked about having formative evaluations for administrators so that there can be sort of a check-in point before you do this big summative evaluation at the end of the year. That could actually be more of a vehicle for, for help, I think, in superintendents. And they also talked about getting updates on spending items within the budget as they're being spent down and being able to kind of see balances in those accounts. So, again, it could be, I'd like to see those things. So, again, it could be, I'd like to see those things happen, since we are having a changing of the guard here a little bit. And it's time to maybe rethink or redesign some of the practices that we do. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know what other people might think would be the best way forward for that, or if it would be a subcommittee thing. But I just wanted to communicate that.
Pete. One thing, Bob, you have given us updates on the budget. Is that something that you could do, you know, that sheet you give us, that each school's expenditures?
Yeah, so, I've typically been giving that out to the resource subcommittee as of lately. With the starting of a new fiscal year, the contracts just being settled. The first quarter, first, really, probably through October, is, especially when we're just settling the contract. I would say the financials probably aren't 100% accurate, because it's kind of catching up and everything. But that can be provided to the entire subcommittee, or the entire school committee.
That'd be great, yeah. I don't think, we don't often see that, so I guess we'd have to kind of go looking for it, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Just to the point that Jean raised. So, in the past, when we've had the kind of, you know, goal-setting and planning, that's, that's been something we've engaged in, both on the summer retreat and also at different points through, you know, during the school year when there's been time. Since we have reduced the number of full school committee meetings in, you know, in part so that we can have a more regular subcommittee schedule, which, you know, we're in the process of doing. That actually, in the past, was the perle of the executive committee. So, the executive committee would kind of figure out, all right, when are we doing this, and how are we going to organize it? And then the full school committee would come together in an open meeting with a lot of administrators as well, because they, they were always a part of it as well. And this, I mean, this was something that was an annual event. And I think it was very productive. And we certainly, you know, we, we had a lot of items on the agenda, and kind of keeping it within a two-hour timeframe was, you know, we, we ended up doing it, but we, you know, we had, we could do this, you know. And it's the executive, the executive subcommittee that kind of pulls that together. So, again, this is with the mayor's, you know, with, you know, leadership with the vice chair. That's the tradition in, in years past.
I think it would be good with the incoming superintendent for this, Mr. Jokel is going to do his goals for this coming year. But I think it's something we would plan for this coming summer, like we've done in the past. And we've also brought in an outside person to facilitate the meetings. That's also a possibility. But that's just something, but that, we can still do some things even now, you know. The time is much more limited.
Maybe I can just take a minute just to clarify. So, the three-year plan that we had concluded at the end of June of this year. We were waiting for the DESI report, which we recently received. And now, I guess, in addition to the accountability data, we're in the process of creating new goals and really digesting, digesting both, the, the report and the accountability data. So, you and the district, you know, leadership will have an opportunity looking at set and setting goals as a result of accountability and improvement, and also in alliance with ESSA regulations, too.
So, what is the format for that? Because we don't often talk about goals that we have for the district at these meetings. So, what would, so what is our, what, what, where do you see that happening in what you just said?
That could, that could happen in a few places. One is, I think, the student support subcommittee.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I think also, probably because, you know, resources are important. The resource subcommittee that touches everything that we, we do here within the district. And as we look, not only at this year, but the next couple of years, how best to achieve our goals.
If I could, so, the, the intersection of these reports outside of us, we need to be able to internalize and then strategically figure out where and how. And then we're going to talk about the accountability system. For example, the intersection of the big DESI report, the accountability system, and the need for improvement. One of the new formats we're going to be looking at is a turnaround plan. And then the ESSA regulations kind of feed into both of those. Some of the accountability data is actually driven by the state's plan with the federal government. That's how it gets its big federal grant, Title I, Title II, et cetera. So, the, usually, we do all that and kind of bring forward an almost-complete district and school improvement plan or turnaround plan. I think it's a great opportunity to have more of a, we didn't write it in June because we knew we'd have all this data in the fall.
Yeah.
So, it's really a good opportunity to engage in more of a dialogue about it as we develop the plan, so.
So, that's good timing. It's good timing. I, I do definitely want to be able to talk about that, and I, and I'm happy to do it through student support. Just so that others know that that's an option.
And I just should add, too, and as part of the DESI report, that report, you know, makes mention of presenting data and goals to the full school committee as well, so.
Yeah.
And I guess, can I just clarify, too? At the next school committee meeting, I'm not presenting my goals. I'm presenting my entry plan, which is more of a process. So, I just want to make that distinction and set that expectation.
All right, next.
Next item, Jen Fisher.
Do we?
The principal of Long Joe. Can you come up and talk about some trips here?
Yeah, we do the delegate.
Oh, we need to do the delegate.
Do we need to act on that?
We're still out of order tonight.
Delegate, Jen, but we can do the.
Like an eighth-grade lunch.
All right, you've got 15 seconds.
Did you need to do something before we?
You're gonna do the delegate thing? Yeah, hang on.
Okay, yeah.
You could stay there.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. I, and I'm, I'm always pleased to do this, because he does a really, really good job in the big delegate meeting. Please, can we nominate Pete Stevens to serve as our delegate at MAS C? That's a, that's a big meeting, and that's a big, there's a lot of people in the room, and I'm always glad when Pete is there, so.
Second.
And this is 18-1056 on the next page?
That is correct.
Okay.
Also need an alternate. I would like to recommend that Jim Walsh be the alternate. Second. Well, first of all, all in favor of Peter?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed is unanimous. And Mr. Walsh, a second chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you for accepting.
All right, thank you, okay.
Moving on.
Now, we're in order.
It feels good. Well, hello, everyone. We're gearing up and starting our planning for our annual Washington DC trip. We're going to be going June 2nd through June 5th, 2019, which just blows me away. We're all geared up, ready to go. We're just waiting approval. The, the kids are all excited. I think this is going to be one of our bigger trips, because this eighth-grade class is really big. Thinking we're going to have either four or five buses of kids going down to Washington this year, yeah, so.
Three hundred kids?
Yeah, we usually do three buses, which is 150, and I think I'm going to have a lot more than that, so.
What's the cost now?
It's 775 this year. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And does each student have to raise that amount of money?
Yeah, we offer a lot of fundraisers for the kids. And parents really help out. Sally Craigin's been great, helping me with getting donations, and we're setting up little coin collectors around the city. And that, last year, raised quite a bit. We were able to scholarship four or five kids on the trip, just from that.
Are we going to do that again this year?
Yeah, yes, yes, please.
At our next school committee meeting, I was talking to Jen, and our plan is that I will bring boxes in. So, all of you, because Pete, thank you so much for, you know, distributing boxes last year. And everyone, and everyone here, think about where you could put a donation box. We have them in a lot of our area businesses. And I will send you off, and I will make a note of who has what. Mr. McSheehy was a champion last time, so.
He really helped out, you know, in, in continuing with all the traditional fundraises. But the teachers are chomping at the bit, and I usually wait for permission from, from you all before we say, go ahead and run with it. So, you know, doing the same trip again, I love working with this tour company, because they provide a really great experience for the kids, especially, my favorite thing now is going to the, the baseball games. We went to the Nationals last year, and we had really great seats. And I was with one of our boys in the autism program, and he had never been to a baseball game. He had no idea what was going on. And so, I told the usher at the Nationals, you know, I have a student who needs some special needs. If you see him, you know, struggling, just let me know. I've got an eye on him. But if he goes to the bathroom or something, just let me know, or if you're curious what's going on. They took us and moved us to our own, like, little private section so that I could talk with them about the game, what was going on, and we could have a perfect view of the field. And the kids were still in my view, but the student and I were able to really, he was like, I didn't know anything about baseball, and now I know everything about baseball. So, it was really, it was a great, the Nationals have been really great with us, and the Baltimore Orioles.
Been having that same left field?
Yeah, it's been really, they gave us, well, they used to put us way up in the nosebleed seats, and I asked, and I asked for, like, different seats, and the nosebleed seats were like 750. And they put us down on these better seats, which were $12 per kid. So, I said, it's worth the $4 increase to get closer, because the kids can, it's like from here to the parking lot, like, away. And the kids are like, it's just, it's incredible what a different experience it is to get that close to the field. And the food there is phenomenal, and, you know, the kids just, I don't know, they get that whole baseball experience that they don't normally get around here. So, I'm really excited about that part. Hopefully, one year, we were able to get the Orioles and the Red Sox game. So, I'm hoping maybe that will happen this year, but we always seem to be a week off. But then we're doing all the typical monuments and heading to, we do an illuminated tour at night, heading to the museum. There's some curriculum that's attached to that. We do have tickets for the Holocaust Museum coming. They're on order. So, the teachers do a great job preparing the students for the Holocaust Museum, and the kids really get a lot out of it. And then, right after that, we take them kind of for a little shopping, because I found that they get so, like, into the Holocaust Museum, and it's, you know, they just have so much to think about that they're really kind of overwhelmed. So, we go shopping afterwards. So, that's been kind of our tradition. And I found this great, like, place to buy T-shirts and sweatshirts in downtown Washington that caters to large groups. So, they were able to take us in and let the kids go shopping and kind of decompress after the Holocaust. So, it's, it's been great. And then we'll be back, you know, on day four, get back into Pittsburgh about 7:30. So, it's been really a, you know, traditional trip that we do, and the kids really love it. So, I'm glad we'll be able to do it again this year. And then for our sixth grade, we're heading up to the White Mountains again. That would be that Tuesday after Memorial Day to that Friday. And I think we'll probably be, last year, we took 45 kids. I think they're shooting for 75 kids for this year to go check out the mountains and, you know, go to explore and look at the ecosystems and the geology. And Mr. Shalafel usually chaperones that trip and goes up with the kids. So, it's a, it's a great time for the kids to go be outside, and, you know, for some of the kids, they don't get to see anything like that around here. And they're always shocked and amazed at snow in Tuckerman's Ravine in May. They think that's just crazy. So, it's a great weather lesson, a great geology lesson, ecosystems. It just ties everything nice in for the, the sixth graders at the end of the school year.
In the, in the White Mountain trip, too, students raised, fundraising and activities go on to cover the cost.
The teachers want to get going on that as soon as possible, so, you know, that one, I think, is going to be about 210, $230. It all hinges on how much the bus costs. The teachers have tried to do other fundraises and not put that cost on the families, and they've done a pretty good job. But the prices of buses keep going up. So, it's, it's, you know, but these trips, I don't want to give them up because of an obstacle like that. So, we just keep having a lot of dances at school.
We started, it was only a couple of hundred dollars.
175, 26 years ago.
You'd be able to sell enough candy bars to.
Yeah, it's crazy. It's crazy.
I have to say, I have an eighth grader going again this year, and, and that parent meeting was packed, yeah. So, is there an upper limit to how many kids you could do?
I have to double-check with the tour company. As long as I get him my numbers by November, a rough estimate, the hotel that we work with, that we've been going to for years, caters to groups. So, he has, it's a Best Western, that's kind of like a U-shaped motel. So, there's two floors on it, and I think there must be 70, 75 rooms. So, with four kids in a room, I mean, I think that's really what our limit is. Yeah, I was, I was at Central Office for the meeting, so I had to let my team lead it. And they, I said, make sure you're done in 30 minutes, and, you know, they did a good job, so.
Yeah, yeah, it was great. And, but it was the biggest one I've seen, so. I mean, I, I, we know that about this class, but.
Yeah, it's huge. So, yeah, I'm working pretty close with the tour company, and they've been really great about accommodating our needs and different things that come up, and, you know, any dietary needs, they just take care of everything for us. It's great, yeah. It's really, it's really incredible how great they are. But we've been with them since Pete and Rich Mascherelli started it not that long ago.
1985.
1985, yeah.
Mr. Mascherelli and myself.
I'd like to make a motion to bundle items 18-1058 and 18-1059 to approve the eighth-grade trip to DC and the sixth-grade trip to the White Mountains.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have enough chaperone gel set?
I think so. I never have a loss for chaperones, but I know who to call if I need any.
And you're the person to contact if people wanted to make a donation?
Yes, they can contact me right at Long Joe Middle School, and they can call or email me. Sally has all my contact information, too.
And next week, or, I'm sorry, at our next meeting, we'll have the donation boxes. And just to remind everyone that these are the, last year, we had donation boxes at Mackey, at Gomes Liquors, at Viola Tires, at Vincent's Flowers, at Park Hill Pizza, at Peerless Liquors, at the Museum, at Debonis, at Pittsburgh Historical Society, Independent Cleaners, thank you, Phyllis LeBlanc, Boulder Cafe, Boulder Gallery, and Jay's Liquors and on River Street, so.
Country Pizza.
And Country Pizza, yep, Country Pizza, which you did. So, we are hoping we'll reach out. All of these folks have said they're interested in having the boxes again. So, if, I'd love to, you know, share some of the locations, so that I'm not the one checking on, like, eight boxes. Anyway, but thank, thank you, thank you so much, Jen. It's such a pleasure to know that this is, you know, packed, and that you're, and that Gabby's going to go, and it's going to be great.
One of 300.
You can chaperon Jean if you want.
Oh, she would not, she would not want that.
She would love that. She would love it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Jen.
There are accountability.
Okay?
Yeah.
As you're all aware, and we've spoken a little bit about it already, on Thursday, the state released its new accountability data on school districts across Massachusetts. I've distributed to you tonight just a summary slide of where our schools are at in terms of their overall classification, their reason, their progress towards improvement target, and the accountability percentile, which is a normative comparison to all schools in the Commonwealth. Just at a high level, on the positive side, the, the district does not require assistance or intervention, meaning that the improvement in learning is happening across the district. There is difference in scores from legacy MCAS to next-generation MCAS. Pittsburgh High, Goodrich, and Science 5 through 8 are still legacy. 2018 was the second year of the MCAS 2.0 test. But first year of reporting is all schools were held harmless in the first year of that, of test. And it's really too difficult to make any comparisons to prior year. All but two of our schools were reporting more than 50% progress towards the improvement target. And two schools do not require any assistance or intervention, Crocker and South Street. And now, the, part of the focus of the test is to close the achievement gap in the lowest 25%. And we were doing, and we have made progress on that in math, in ELA, in grades three through eight, and high school. You know, clearly, you know, six of our eight schools were. clearly, you know, six of our eight schools were identified for requiring assistance intervention. You know, on the spreadsheet here, you can see where their, you know, their ranking is specifically. There's a lot of work to do in focusing on the subgroups at some of these schools. We're in the process now of, you know, amongst cabinet, principals, directors, and, and principals of putting together team, we'll be having meetings with DSAC to create turnaround plans over the next month. You know, there's, there's a lot of work to do. One of the issues that, that we do face is chronic absenteeism. And, you know, that's, that's a big driver for our performance. If the students aren't coming to school, it's, it's hard to learn. So that's one, that's one area that we're going to focus on and, and improve over this year. You know, specifically, the high school, the graduation rate did increase. The dropout rate decreased, kind of a converse relationship there. Seven out of nine subgroups exceeded ELA targets. Six out of nine subgroups either met or exceeded math targets. Five of seven subgroups either met or exceeded science targets. And now one of the components that's utilized as part of the assessment is its completion of advanced coursework. And all students and subgroups exceeded target. And I guess really as evidence, last Friday, we had the AP kickoff event with Mass Insight and we had about 500 students at Fitchburg High now enrolled in AP courses. So that will further bolster our, the progress and initiatives that Principal Roach and his team have underway up at Fitchburg High.
Was that included in this round of accountability, or is that for the next accountability measurement?
Well, it's the successful completion of advanced courses as measured by grades through the automatic data submission. And it's based on a specific set of courses identified by code in the students' course selection sort of makeup. So that dataset is included in this accountability.
And it doesn't matter what score they got on the test? Just that they completed the class?
Correct.
Correct. So, so obviously that must have really helped Fitchburg High a lot. I've never been a big fan of MCAS, but these aren't, these aren't great results. And part of what I was hoping to be able to talk about in student support is what, and I don't know if you want to talk about it or don't, but how much are we, how much is, it seems like I hear about DSAC all the time, but, and forgive my ignorance here, but I just don't understand if those, if that's reaping any rewards or, or, I don't know, or effects. Where we've got Crocker and South Street tearing it up comparatively. It'd be interesting to see if there's different things that are really happening there than in some of the other schools.
Well, I don't know if you remember, DSAC, Sarah Jordan came with Jeremy Roach back in the spring and, you know, spoke about what turnaround school is and that the work takes time, especially at the high school level. So every, every school is a little bit unique. I think one of the schools that has, although they have been improvement, I think maybe this past year's results really vaulted them up into another level. Well, it's hard to say because we're not comparing, but South Street Elementary, they've been working hard for a few years now and have beginning, are beginning to show progress. So I think, you know, and also looking at, you know, some of these numbers and, you know, there's the stories behind all of them. And I think once we start talking about it at, you know, about it at the subcommittee level, the student support subcommittee, you know, we can get a little bit more granular. But the programming is different at some of the elementary schools and the number of students is different, too. So.
Are they sharing their best practices amongst the elementary schools?
Yes.
But just explain DSAC to our audience.
Well, the, it's no longer called DSAC. The state reorganized. It's called the System of Support. And we're now part of something called the Central West System of Support. And their work will be dedicated to help, helping unpack through a root cause analysis at the schools that need help. And a root cause analysis is, here's your data, why do you think it's the, why do you think those are your results? So for example, Sarah Jordan helps with data analysis. So she'll look at chronic absenteeism, and there are a number of state reports through something called Edwin, where we can look at, is that if Paula Quinto is chronically absent, was my teacher absent as well? What happened that year that, was I sick? Was, was there family disruption? What is it that now we can apply some sort of action to help support me to reengage in school and do well? So it's, it's really kind of unpacking what the numbers actually represent. Sarah, that's kind of what she's been doing, helping Fitchburg High. And Fitchburg High had some clear improvements with her support. It's still up to the school administrators to manage it and roll it out and implement and supervise, evaluate people, all the regular work. But Sarah can take the time, and people like Sarah, take the time to look at the data, the back of the house, and then say, "This is what we're thinking, what do you think about this? Is this the case? Yes, no?" But if you recall, last year when she presented, Fitchburg High was in the fifth percentile.
Right.
It's, it's gone, gone well. They're just, the reason they're still on this list is because they're still working their turnaround plan.
Okay.
But they're, I mean, their AP of like that, and that's over two years.
Yep.
I think it was like a 70, the improvements were in the 70 percentiles. I mean, it's huge.
It's amazing.
Huge.
No other school system I know is doing that.
Huge. And the numbers are legit. I mean, the auditorium was full last week. And the kids are excited to work hard. We even heard it when the commission was there. And it was Lisa who said, "You know, they asked me to work hard, but it feels good. Makes me feel smart. It's a good kind of hard." That's what you're looking for.
I, I would just, as an anecdote, I was doing the concession stand at the football game and one of the recent grads came back, band kid, to help in the concession stand. Got to love Gio. And he and then some of his other friends who had graduated were talking and they said, "College is a lot easier than high school." And, you know, he's at Johnson and Wales and they're, these are not, you know, these aren't walk-in, you know, park kind of schools that some of these kids were going to. And they felt like they were very prepared. So that's, that's really good. It's just, it's just 3% and 4%.
Well, it's, it's hard to get from here, what you see, to there. But for example, looking at the elementaries, all our coaches work together. We meet once a month. They share practices. We have a common curriculum. We have common assessment formative and progress monitoring assessments. The scoring is the same. The professional development is shared. It's really about the implementation at the classroom level and the level of investment and support the staff has with every group of kids. So, but I think it, it gets down to unpacking the numbers. I mean, the actual official reports are online at the Department of Ed website and they're public. So, you know, I printed out some because I like paper and I read paper with my highlighter and my Post-it notes. But they're all online under the school and district profiles, the accountability tab, and it's all interactive. So you can pull up what it looks for high needs kids or students with disabilities. And we're, actually, we're going to do that work with the coaches on Wednesday. So they can grapple with their school's data to determine and interpret, like where can they, where's their opportunity to either provide professional development or request what people need for support. But that's the long haul. Now, DSAC is in that mix because they have staff, Joe, Dr. Connors, who was the superintendent in Grafton, Bruce McDonald, who was a principal in Belmont. So they come in and help with the administration, do walkthroughs, look for characteristics that should be in place, and then think about how to present the data so that people can hear it and use it to work from. So it's, it's not quick and dirty, but in order to be meaningful and have people own it and then have it be sustainable, it's really a partnership. So we're just starting with it.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, Jim. Couple of quick questions, being relatively new still to all of this. So is the accountability report based solely on the MCAS results?
It's based on a number of factors.
Okay.
And there is, there is a report.
Right here, there's, right here.
The, and these, there's, the formula is kind of convoluted, but achievement is MCAS scores. Then there's student growth. So one of the formulas behind, you know, the psychometrics, they look for the growth patterns over multiple years. Then there's that high school completion rate, four-year cohort graduation rate, extended engagement, five years. So if you bring back dropouts, you're not penalized. And then your annual dropout rate. All those are weighted. The progress towards English proficiency, which is the access test, that's now weighted for 10% of your school calculation. Chronic absenteeism and the advanced coursework. But part of the regulatory requirements for all that is, so you get all these numbers and they add up to something. 50% of that number is now based on your lowest 25% student performers. So the lowest 25% is now weighted towards 50% of your score. The goal is, there's no dancing around it. Whoever that, that lowest 25% could be all proficient. The goal is, though, every kid deserves the best education possible to advance their learning. So that lowest 25% is always going to be there and you're always going to need to create an improvement plan for them. So it's not as simple as just everyone is worth one.
And we're not numbers anymore. So what is, so you're meeting, what is the language now? Meeting target?
The top is, well, the schools of recognition, I think there are 51 in the state. Then your meeting targets.
Wait, so schools of recognition is top?
Top, yeah. That, well, that's not top. It's to the left of the continuum.
Okay, okay, right.
And that's, that's individual schools, not school districts.
Correct. And they, and it could be they've exceeded their targets, they've exceeded their achievement targets, or they've exceeded their improvement targets.
Okay.
So there are a few ways you can earn that designation. Then there's meeting targets or partially meeting targets. And the Department of Ed ascribes numbers to that, but it's about 80% of the schools, 80 to 85% of the schools are either partially meeting, meeting, or schools of recognition. Partially meeting, there's a 50th percentile range in one of the scores. It means you're making progress. So it's a good thing. And then schools requiring assistance, this is part of the ESSA regulation. That's the, the 15% at the far right of the continuum. It's schools that have either focused or targeted support. And it could be because you fall in the lowest 10 percentile with ranking in the state, or your subgroup, your cohorts of kids fall into that. But that's required by federal law. And then the broad comprehensive support is that that would be your neediest district or school. So as a district, we're partially meeting targets. We don't even qualify for focused or targeted support as a district. But we have schools that do because they're either in the lowest 10% or they have subgroups that haven't kept up. Now, it's a lot. It's, it's a complicated, complicated formula. There is a document online and I think I actually have copies. It's a, it's called the Summary of the District and School Accountability. If you want a copy, I can give it to you. It's, it's online. It's just sometimes pesky to find, but you're welcome. I brought a couple of copies. I would take one. Just so you can see this, gives you the layout of the numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on.
You know, while we're still on the superintendent's report, I would just like to make one, I'd like to thank Edie Ravenel for her communication to us.
Yeah.
Thank Edie for us, for her jelly.
Great. So tonight on the, under the action items, number 60 through 64, we have donations of either cash or items from Fidelity Bank. We have gift cards from several stores estimated at $920 to students in need. Thank you, Fidelity Bank. Then we have, again, about $900 worth of 30 individual backpacks from the department employees at the Department of Transitional Assistance, Fitchburg, and Carmen Julia Vargas and coworkers. Next, we have another donation of backpacks, of 61 backpacks with an estimated value of about $1,800 from Twin City Baptist Church and Hospitality Director Tina Tao. Even more backpacks. The other two donations are 450 backpacks that were distributed by the Enrollment Center from an anonymous source. And lastly, J and R Glass donated about 120, or donated 125 backpacks filled with school supplies and gift cards to Walmarts and Coles, plus also a handwritten card of encouragement and good luck for the new school year. And that has an estimated value of $3,000.
Write a motion, make a motion, motion to accept, where we, Bob, 18-1064.
Yep, 181064.
Including 1064.
I have a question.
And, and.
Is there, is there any way that we express a thanks, like a card or anything?
Yeah, we, yes, yes.
With letters.
Thank you, card, letter, yes.
Letters in your packet.
And also, I just, lastly, the anonymous donation of $10,149.46 towards AP funding to reduce AP fee for students.
So we're including 18-1065.
Correct.
Do we need a second?
We, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous.
Second?
Mr. Stevens.
What's the motion?
Motion was, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make the comment, and obviously the item 181060 from Fidelity Bank, you don't see, you don't see gift cards. But it was pretty impressive walking into the central office when all the backpacks were in what was the old chapel of, of the convent. And looking at this list of donations that, I wish everybody in the city was watching tonight's meeting to hear what people do in the city to help our kids do well in school. And it's, it's very touching, very appreciative and can't say thank you enough to everybody who, who made these donations to the district.
Walsh, when they're coming into the Enrollment Center and they enroll and they're walking out with a backpack to start school the next day, that's very, very impressive. And a real thank you to our donors.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, and then also tonight, I think as Sally mentioned, we have the second reading of two policies. The school use property by parties other than the public schools. And then the non-discrimination and non-harassment training tonight is also the second reading.
So, so we have one more reading, then we actually vote to accept them? Is that how this process?
No, the second reading will conclude the process.
Okay. So the one question I had, and maybe it was raised earlier, in terms of use of school property, so if somebody is having, using the gym at Fitchburg High after hours, they... pay for the cost to cover a custodian, would be?
There's a, there's a new fee schedule that's part of the work instruction that's separate from the policy itself.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question, too, on that one. So, is it just a typo, or do I not understand that connection? A school committee shall award concessions for food at any field under its control only to the highest responsible bidder. This section shall not apply to Boston? I don't understand that. Is that just a state thing? Do we need that there? And then it?
That is, so, basically, so, yep, so, yeah, the, this is, this policy.
Is that a procurement law? No?
This policy is, this, these two paragraphs are verbatim from the old policy. Okay. What happens with this policy, unlike the prior policy from 1999, the 1999 policy was a combination of this policy, these two paragraphs, plus an identification of all the community groups, a classification of these community groups, and fee structure. So, that's been kind of bifurcated, as we've done with many policies. There's the policy, and then there's the work instruction. So, we really.
Where do people see that? Where do they see?
So, that would, that would, people would, we would share that when people ask to rent the facilities, and we'll put it on our website.
It is on our website?
We will put it up if it's not up already.
Yeah.
It should be available because then people would know what the rates are for if you want to rent either the Fitchburg High School auditorium, the field house, or a gym or auditorium at another school.
Where would that be?
I think it's run through Tom Petersen.
Yeah, school building maintenance will be.
Where would it go under the website?
Um, you know, I.
You could let me know.
Yeah, I'll let you know, I'll follow up with you.
All right. But I guess, so do we need to say, this section shall not apply to Boston? And then it, and then it starts in a mid-sentence?
This is, yeah.
And since the school's in effect, like, that's not a, I don't know, it's not a complete thought, I was just.
That first paragraph is actually in the code, it's a general law, correct?
This is Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 71.
Right.
This is the law.
And the second paragraph is that wording that.
Looks like the word A just needs to be capitalized and "and."
And.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept action items 18 dash 1066 and 18 dash 1067.
I'm sorry, may I ask one more question before somebody second's up? When Mr. Cartwright spoke tonight and said there's no sexual harassment policy, this non-discrimination and non-harassment policy stands for just all harassment?
I believe it does. I mean.
So, I'm not sure, I mean, that's just something that maybe if people were watching, just to, I mean, we obviously have a sexual harassment policy.
If, if, I mean, we have many policies and procedures.
Mm-hmm.
We have both. Originally, when the bullying, anti-bullying and bullying prevention law went into effect, we actually had to submit our plan to the Department of Ed for approval.
Right.
And some iterative, and Pam Rivers, it kind of leads the charge for that, and we had, at the time, it was attorney Rebecca, I can't remember, Bouchard.
Bouchard, Becky Bouchard.
Becky Bouchard, who worked with us, because she worked with other districts around the state. So, I'm, I'm not sure what people know exists.
Right.
So, it would definitely be helpful, I think, to share what we have to a broader audience of folks.
Is that on the website as well?
Some policies are.
It should be.
That particularly.
Yeah, that, that should happen. Sometimes it means scanning an old version because it may be so old, we don't have it electronically, in which case, needs to be revised if it's really old.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Motion was made to accept 18 dash 1068, no, what am I, 18 dash 66, 1066, 18 dash 1067, right? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve action item 18 dash 1071, the approval of the warrant.
69.
Well, we have to go, that's, we need to go in.
Okay, yeah, we have to come back out.
Come back out, yeah.
All right, motion made to accept 18 dash 1071.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that it? Now, we can win, do I have a motion? And.
Motion to go into executive session only to return to adjourn.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yep, yep, yep.
We'll actually return to approve the two items.
Can I take this?
Return to approve the two items and then adjourn.
Yep.
Jean, do you have a moment?